Welcome to the February 5, 2024 South Haven City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order. Tonight's invocation is from Pastor Dan Davis of Life Bridge Church.
Mayor Brown, City Council members, good evening. Privileged to be here with you tonight on behalf of all the people who are part of Life Bridge Church. I want to thank you for faithfully serving South Haven and the residents here. Let's pray together. Great gracious God, Lord of light and Lord of love, we come with grateful and expectant hearts for what you have done, for what you are doing, and what you will do for the welfare of this wonderful city of ours in and through this gathered assembly of leaders that you have called to serve for such a time as this. Thank you for the varied talents, experiences, passions, and perspectives that they bring tonight into everything that will be heard and considered and discussed and decided. Grant them a unity of spirit and purpose to find a leadership synergy that is greater than the sum of the parts. Help them to distinguish the significant from the superficial, the effective from the expedient, to connect the dots of their many good ideas to find the best solutions possible. Give them a healthy respect for the past, a clear picture of the present, a hopeful optimism for the future, one that sees the possibilities for a better tomorrow for this city and its citizens, both now and in the generations to come. And whether it's the council or those present here tonight, give us the scriptural spirit of James, who encourages us to be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to anger, that we would treat each other with the respect with which we want to be treated. And so we commit this council, this meeting, this evening, into the care of your loving hands, and we pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Andy Brown.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to move to amend the agenda to include a discussion on lifeguards.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Oh, any discussion?
Where would that be placed in the agenda?
We could do it under, no, under new business. 13A.
Sounds, sounds good.
Okay, we're adding discussion about lifeguards under new business 13A. Any more discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? And the motion passes. The agenda is approved. Okay, moving on. Public comments for items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for the public hearing. You have up to five minutes.
So since lifeguards are now on the agenda, this would be the time to talk about lifeguards.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Kate Engelbrach, 125 Elkenberg Street. Thank you for putting lifeguards on the agenda for tonight. I am actually speaking on behalf of Heather Welsh Johnson of 931 South Haven Place. She's unable to be here tonight because of a family emergency. Today I stand before you to advocate for the critical importance of the reinstatement of a lifeguarding program along our shores. While I have previously taken a more reserved approach in advocating for lifeguards, current circumstances have compelled me to add, to add to my focus. The escalating number of both fatal and near fatal drownings, as well as water emergencies occurring off our shores in recent years, has raised profound concerns within our community. Though we did not incur many reported incidents this past season, there were still situations that needed emergency response that went unreported and were handled by bystanders. I have had many friends, family members, beachgoers, and people from the community tell me their unreported personal horrifying stories of being saved from rip currents, waves, and inner tubes off our shores with the help of beachgoers. The statistics point, paint a sobering picture of the risks individuals face while enjoying our beaches. Put together by Cam Doherty, I want to read to you some key points from an email she sent in August 2023 to council and city staff. According to the U.S. Lifeguarding Association, the chance of drowning at a beach with lifeguards during guarded hours stands at an impressive 1 in 18 million. In South Haven, over the past four decades, we have witnessed 14 tragic drownings. Notably, two of these fatalities occurred during the years when South Haven did have lifeguards, the other 12 during years without lifeguards. Since the discontinuation of the lifeguarding program in 2001, we have seen a troubling increase in drowning deaths, with 58% occurring post the presentation made to the council by Cam Doherty and former South Haven lifeguard Sean Russell. In 2022 alone, the Great Lakes region accounted for 108 drowning deaths, a distressing 42% of those in Lake Michigan, 36% in Michigan, 9% occurred off the South Haven shoreline. Shockingly, South Haven witnessed a disproportionately high number with four fatalities along its shores, solidifying its status based on statistical data as the deadliest shoreline in Michigan. I must emphasize that misconceptions of liability concerns, once believed to be barriers, have been thoroughly addressed by the city attorney, showing that reinstating a lifeguard program is not hindered by legal constraints. The urgent need for lifeguards becomes even more apparent when considering that reliance solely on weather service alerts and flags proves inadequate for ensuring beach safety, particularly given the unique challenges posed by our peers. Please note that both lawsuits recently filed against the city of South Haven by drowning victims' families are regarding the wrong use of flag color. Response time for drowning incidents demands our attention. Delays in the identification of a drowning.
One minute.
Which could be several minutes travel of first responders to the incident site, which Shays has stated as three to five minutes, assessments of the situation possibly one to two minutes, and gearing up, which can take up to two to three minutes, culminate in a crucial conservative 11 minutes lost before responders can reach a victim. In an active drowning, the victim will submerge in less than one minute. The window for intervention narrows significantly, underscoring the necessity for proactive measures. Time matters, otherwise it becomes a recovery, not a rescue. I have identified individual, individuals ready to assist in recruitment and training. Let us not view liability and costs as insurmountable obstacles, but rather as challenges that can be effectively managed for the greater good of our community. I urge each of you to consider the undeniable urgency of this matter and profound impact
Your time's up.
reinstating a lifeguard program can have on saving lives.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Nat, 125 Elkenberg. Can I pass, can this go around so I can refer to it during my five minutes, which will take five minutes?
Sure.
If you can pass it to Joe, and then he could pass it around. You can grab one too, Kate, if you want. What I'm passing out is Cam Doherty's work that she's done over the years regarding the beach safety program. She worked with Sean Russell on this, and I just thought it'd be good to refer to, to refresh everyone's memories. I don't know who's received it, if you've looked at it, or if you need a little tutorial from me on it. Maybe you do, maybe you don't, but I'm here anyway. So, the first page has to do with a timeline starting in 1985 through 2022. Between 1985 and 2001, we had lifeguards on the beaches of South Haven. In that 16-year span, there were two drownings. In 2001, City Council decided to move to swim at your own risk, and lifeguards were no longer on our beaches. In that 16-year time span, there have been 12 drownings. So six times as many drownings over that time period. The second, I'm just going over these quickly. The second page has to do with improvement recommendations, and Cam and Sean went through many different things, some of the things we've implemented here in South Haven, such as fines and pier gates, and there's a whole list in that one side. And then across the top, there's check marks indicating what different applications each of those things would provide. And the only thing that would give you education, identify, identify and react, instruct and prevent, respond, and recovery, checks in all those boxes, is having lifeguards on our beaches. So that's briefly page two. And page three, they actually, this is 2021 proposal. Cam's a very good financial person, much better than I am, and she put together a whole financial sheet for a lifeguard program covering north and south beaches. Now, this is for 2021, so you have to weigh the difference in cost of living and all other things in this. But I think a lot of work has been done already to get this program off the ground. So the time is now. There is no reason that city staff, Kate, Hozier, needs to delay implementing our lifeguard program. You have been provided a book by Bob Pratt, I don't know how many of you have read it. Cam Doherty, Sean Russell have provided an exhaustive and thorough analysis regarding all aspects of getting this program off the ground. Heather has gathered invaluable information on education, and experts in Michigan and Illinois who want to come here to South Haven and help. I have been involved in this endeavor for the past few years, and I do not accept any more delay tactics. We need city staff to stop putting roadblocks up and work with the citizens. We really want to work with everybody. I mean, this could be a community effort. I have stood before this council many times and have expressed facts. My facts sometimes aren't Pollyanna, but they are based on the safety and well-being of our residents and our visitors. And this fact is provided by experts on water safety, which is so important. We need water safety experts running our beach safety program. We need immediate eyes on the water to rescue someone in trouble. All the bells and whistles regarding.
One minute.
Flags, all the bells and whistles regarding flags and neon running signs are of no use, if not controlled by people who are proficient in water safety. We need it now. We need it as soon as possible before it's too late. None of us want to hear another siren going down to that beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
I'm Elaine Herbert, 404 North Shore Drive, referencing Agenda Item 13, an ad hoc committee to establish standards of excellence or quote code of conduct. There are no staff notes on this, no way for a resident to know the genesis of this, but here goes. I'd like to suggest that ad hoc members to be the councilpersons wrongly maligned by the mayor two weeks ago. I suggest code of conduct requires respect, truth telling, and correction of misinformation. I suggest that excellence in code of conduct requires the definition of malfeasance. Quote, "Malfeasance is intentional conduct that is wrongful or unlawful, especially by officials or public employees. Malfeasance is when a party causes injury to another party on purpose. And misconduct in the workplace, a performance of an official duty in an improper or unlawful manner." Directly to this agenda item, fallout from what was said by the mayor two weeks ago doesn't just disappear poof simply because an ad hoc committee is formed. The mayor is the executive head of a multimillion-dollar municipal business on whom city employees and residents rely for safety and welfare. Code of Conduct requires Mayor Brown to make public amends. Subject to just common sense code of business and public official conduct, the mayor owes City Council a full public retraction and correction of the appalling public accusations made against them, personal and professional, and set the record straight. Tell the truth of what occurred. Be contrite. Repair the bridges burned. I fear we are still on fire. For those just joining, and because the official minutes bear no mention, I'll recap. On 116, City Council voted 4-3 on a routine annual appointment to Planning Commission. The mayor refers to peers who simply voted contrary to her, to her, as having, quote, "hidden agenda," quote, "blindsiding me and the public," accusing, quote, "total lack of transparency," calling her peers' actions, quote, "cowardly," not best practices, and quoted Martin Luther King, calling it, quote, "conniving methods." Looking directly at Councilwoman Onuki, mother of two young girls and director of the local children's museum, she said, "Is this how you want your children to see you, operating behind their backs?" Unquote, the mayor accused peers violating the Open Meetings Act of very serious criminal accusation with absolutely no basis or proof. She admonishes shame on you to her peers and tells them to, quote, "act with integrity, become a city council that is respected, not ridiculed." City Charter, Section 4.5 further describes the role of the mayor as "the keeper of the peace." This would require leadership, legitimacy, fitness for office. All city employees, certainly our police force, utility workers, the city clerk, and what about us, regular residents, need confidence that the mayor will not ever refer to them or us as cowardly, as lawbreakers, as disrespected or ridiculed, or betrayers of our own children simply because we disagree with her. Since my emails are never acknowledged as received by anyone at the city, I cite my email communication sent immediately after the mayor's assault, assault on council. Kindly take it under advisement regarding code of conduct. I charge the mayor with malfeasance. According to State of Michigan guidelines, I cite failure to understand and implement procedural rules, i.e. Robert's Rules of Order, failure of leadership, failure of fundamental standards of ethical conduct and civility in local government, public, personal attacks and threats at other city council members, failure to refer to or even seat council peers by proper titles, and more. Dividing a council undermining confidence of vital city staff and residents is not protecting the health, welfare, and safety of residents. I recommend immediate action by City Council.
One minute.
I don't need that, thank you, by City Council and city administration to demonstrate to residents and city employees that this erratic behavior brings concern about fundamental suitability for office. Loss of confidence in Mayor Brown's leadership by city employees and residents is serious. I suggest that action considered can be a public admonition, a public censure, or if the mayor continues to refuse to take responsibilities for her actions, forfeiture of office, and removal proceedings. An ad hoc committee, sure, that's nice for the future, thank you for that, whose ever idea that was, but repair this singular issue now. I have sent you all the appropriate backup from the South Haven City Charter. Thank you. And I don't mean to be rude, but I am fleeing from COVID. I'll watch the rest of it on television. Thank you for your service.
Lisa Beck, 879 Monroe Boulevard. And I think others presented much more eloquently and factually than I can, as usual, but I am in favor of getting lifeguards. I am originally.
Can you move the microphone closer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I am in favor of lifeguards. I am from the East Coast originally, years ago, and I go back frequently, and they use lifeguards in the ocean, and it is extremely effective. You see them there, they can see the riptides, they get people in and out of the water quickly, they're there if something happens. And when I moved here, I hate to say it, but I had what I think a lot of tourists do have here, the idea that, oh, it's just a lake, it's like a small lake in Wisconsin or something, you know, what can possibly happen? And I'm a very good swimmer. I swim three or four times a week, and had no idea of the flag system, and yet realized how easy it is if a, you know, current comes over, a riptide, something like that, you swallow water. I'm sure that's what happened to the two that died in '22. They were very good swimmers. I believe they were on the swim team, and there you go. 12 deaths in the number of years is just too many, and I think we owe it to the tourists, I think we owe it to the residents to take care of their safety. I think we can find the money, and I think there's a lot of positives in it. I think, you know, wouldn't it be great if we started a lifeguard school here, and it actually caught on, and we were training people from other towns and stuff like that? I think there's a lot of possibilities, and so I hope that you will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
David Beanstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard, and I'm not sure if this belongs here or at the end, because there is a, an agenda item, it's under the consent agenda item F, about a letter of intent for electric vehicle charging grant application. And I did want to speak to the issue of EVs anyway, and my comment is that I'm hoping that the city, and I don't know who has the purchasing authority, if that's, you know, divided up among the various departments or what, but I'm hoping that we can take a good, serious look at, at buying EVs. As, as an EV owner, my wife and I, we, we have two cars, one is a complete EV, which we can take to Grand Rapids and back easily, and the other is a plug-in hybrid, so we go the first 30 or 40 miles on electric, and then it seamlessly switches over to the hybrid, and then we only get about 57 miles a gallon. So what I'm saying is, I think the city could save a bundle of, of money and gas, and if we would look at it over a period of years. Let's take a serious look at investing in some EVs as these contracts come up to buy new vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any more comments? If not, we will move on to the consent agenda, items A through I. Does anyone want to remove an item off the consent agenda? I would like to move item C, and that will become 8C under old business. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Point of order, wouldn't that have happened at the time we approved the agenda?
We can do that, but if you also look under your, your fine print, anyone can ask to have that removed at the time of approval.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with item C moved?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through I, with C pulled out to serve as 8C under new business.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Arnold.
Yes.
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to old business. City Council will be asked to take the following actions regarding an amendment to Section 1714 of the South Haven zoning ordinance. And there is a need to hold a public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes, and we will enter into a public hearing. Kate, would you like to start?
Sure, and I'm going to defer to Griffin, who's been giving us a, a number of our updates on this portion, so Griffin, if you can give us an update.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity. This is, this agenda item is being brought back before you all. As you likely remember, from January, this proposed ordinance amendment was brought to you all for introduction. So in the terms of background, in September of 2021, the City Council adopted an ordinance regarding the placement of permanent fireplaces, fire pits, and barbecues. Following its adoption, there were some concerns raised by local businesses and members of the public that the ordinance was overly restrictive and didn't work well based on the different sized lots in the city of South Haven. So in April of 2022, the City Council requested that the regulations in question be reviewed by the Planning Commission. Over quite a while, the Planning Commission created a subcommittee to review the existing ordinance regarding the placement of fire pits, fireplaces, and barbecues, and to study the topic in general. Ultimately, on August 3 of 2023, the Planning Commission reviewed a proposed amendment from the subcommittee, or referred as Option A. At that same time, the Planning Commission discussed the possibility of eliminating wood burning fire pits and fireplaces as permitted structures outright. That was considered Option B, and the Planning Commission sent a recommendation for the City Council to consider both Option A and B. Ultimately, the City Council voted that Planning Commission move forward with Option A. The City Council hosted the required public hearing, voted on that text amendment back to you all, which was introduced at the January City Council meeting. So this evening, this is brought before you all to host a public hearing, and then ultimately consideration of adoption. Happy to do the best I can to answer any questions, and I will see, just because I'm catching it right now, if you look at the recommendation, it says, "Consider the adoption of ordinance amendment 1741." It is 1714, as written everywhere else. That's just a typo I'm catching right now.
So it's supposed to be 1714.
It is supposed to be 1714, yes.
Thank you. This is a good time for public comments for the public hearing? If anyone has anything to say? Commissioner?
Clark Gruber, 305 Erie Street. I am actually here on behalf of my neighbors Holly and Grace. Holly and Grace were going to do a project in their backyard, which abuts up to my backyard. And unfortunately, at that time, before they were able to finish, our ordinance came into effect, and it has prevented them from completing their project. So I just know that if this were going to go forward, Grace would have been here, and she can't be, so I want to be here on her behalf, because she has come to almost more meetings than I did with regards to the fireplace. And it's a good project, they would be right in my backyard, and I think it fits within the spirit of the corrections I think you guys are going to try to put in place tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Mary Lynn Boggy, 70 Gabriel Drive. First of all, thank you for considering maintaining the 25-foot setbacks for wood on the permanent fireplaces and barbecues. Like to point out that both the EPA and the state of Michigan recognize the harmful, that harmful particulates in wood can be detrimental to health, particulates of the greatest risk to older adults, of which I am one, and my voice is really giving out on me tonight, sorry about that. Children, teens, and people with lung and heart disease. The EPA and. The EPA and Eagle recommend using dry-seasoned woods to lessen the harmful particulates when burning wood. In our ordinance, just to make it clear, we state that the ones proposed, that fire pits and fireplaces can only burn solid-seasoned wood and then other types of fuel. But when we come to barbecue, we change that to logs. I would like to suggest that we just cross out logs and use burn-only solid-seasoned wood. The reason logs comes in there is that when the EPA is talking about campfires in campgrounds, they use the term logs. Other than that, they never use it. So we're not a campground. These are residential properties. Let's not muddy the water about what's appropriate. That using dry-seasoned wood is what's appropriate. Additionally, I would like to encourage you, these requirements only cover permanent placements, permanent structures. We need to get rules for temporary ones. Many, many people have temporary fire pits. These cause the same smoke regardless of whether they're permanent or temporary. And I know in speaking with George, that he had mentioned it is possible to regulate these. And if you happen to look at the ordinance, that is a sample ordinance that the state puts out. They definitely recognize these temporary things. You can ban them entirely, which I would love. I know you won't do that. So I ask that you please adopt rules that require that they be set back as far from the property lines just as the permanent ones are. And so if you would please consider that, I would think it would be a health benefit to the entire neighborhood, to the entire city. But this is something, action that needs to be taken now. And if it goes in the general ordinance, that's great, because it will apply to all of the temporary ones that are now present. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Lynn. Griffin, did you have any comments after that? You looked like you might.
No, I don't. Thank you.
Any other comments? Is it, is there any questions from City Council?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed? The public hearing is closed. And now I am seeking a motion to approve an ordinance amendment to regulate the placement of permanent outdoor fire pits, fireplaces, and barbecues.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt the ordinance to amend Section 1714 of the South Haven zoning ordinance to regulate the placement of permanent outdoor fire pits, fireplaces, and barbecues.
Second.
Any other comments, Kate? For me?
No, thank you.
Any discussion?
Yes. So if I may, Griffin, could you comment on Mary Lynn's suggestion with regard to the season wood for barbecues?
I can comment in the sense that I know that barbecues use several different types of wood, depending on what you're cooking. And that could potentially be a reason to leave it more broad there. But at the end of the day, I will defer to what the City Council would like to do.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold?
With that in mind, I was just thinking, my neighbor has a pellet smoker. And so then, you know, we're almost having to start over rewriting if we're trying to legislate them all. So yeah, it gets complicated quickly.
I can definitely see that.
And I would just like to echo with regard to Grace and Holly. They were at very, very many, and it was just very unfortunate with the timing. And they have gone to great lengths. I know Shays went by, and I've been to their home. And yes, it's an excellent setup, and let's not make them miss a third summer.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? The motion passes, and this, the Ordinance 1714 is amended to regulate the placement of permanent outdoor fire pits, fireplaces, and barbecues. Moving on to 8C, I would like to make a motion to amend the amended minutes from the January 2 meeting that the mayor clarified that beach safety would be discussed at the priority setting workshop if that is a priority of City Council members. And this, if you go back and watch the video of the meeting, this is what I stated. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I didn't have notice to go back and look, and I didn't recall that statement.
That's okay. Any others discussion? There's a motion to make that amendment. Let's do a roll call.
Hosley?
No.
Onuki?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The motion passes, and that is amended for the January 2 minutes. Moving on to New Business, the City Council will be asked to consider a motion to accept the audit report for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. Kate?
Thank you, and I'm going to get this sorted out here for our friend here, Doug Fredeveld, who is our auditor. And we have here our audit presentation. I'll go ahead and start slideshow. And Doug, I think you know how those work.
Let's try it.
Okay.
All right, thank you for having me. This is for the audit for the period ended. We conducted an audit of your financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30 of '23, and have provided an opinion on that. In addition to just audited financial statements, the book that you have in front of you, if you have it, is an annual comprehensive financial report. This report is submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association for an award for excellence in financial reporting. The award was received for your 2022 audit, and this report has been submitted once again for that award. So congratulations on receiving that award. If you go to page one of these financial statements, if you have the bound copy, our opinion on the financial statements, after we complete an audit, we form an opinion. And the opinion is in the second paragraph on page one. It says, "The financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city." That's a good, clean opinion, an unmodified report, and certainly what you want to have when you have an audit completed. Now, in addition to this report, there's two other reports way at the very end. One is on internal controls and compliance at the financial statement level on page 129. And there are no issues to report on that report. And in addition to that, on page 131, there is a Uniform Guidance Report for Internal Control and Compliance, along with an opinion on your federal financial assistance. That also is a good, clean report. There were no issues found in that either. So everything's good so far. If you just page through the report a little bit, on page five, Management's Discussion and Analysis, there's a very long laundry list here under Financial Highlights of all the many projects that the city was working on or completed during the year ended 2023. So that's a good thing. If you don't like to look at numbers, to read through that. I won't read all that in detail, but many, many street park projects and that kind of thing were going on during the year. I won't make you look at numbers. I'll let you look at pictures here for the rest of it, for the most part. So this is from pages 15, 16, and 17, these first couple slides. This is called your government-wide statement of net position. It includes all of the activities on a full accrual basis. And the first slide here just kind of shows you your total expenses on the governmental activities, which includes everything other than electric, water, sewer, marina, and your other enterprise funds. So basically, all of the governmental type activities. And you can see the expenses on each of these exceeds the program revenues. Program revenues are direct revenues that relate to each area. And it kind of gives you an idea of what your property taxes and state shared revenue, which are not program revenues, they're called general revenues, what they kind of cover in each of the areas. So just kind of a picture of that for you. And this tells you where all of your revenues by type come from in those governmental activities. For this past fiscal year, the capital grants was up quite a bit from the previous year. It's 8% here. Last year, it was 4%. So that kind of drove the other pieces of the pie down a little bit. But overall, not too much change from previous years. And then pages 18 through 21 in the report are your, it's called your governmental funds. This is more the basis of accounting on which you get your normal quarterly reports. First, on page 18, just wanted to point out, your general fund is in the left-hand column there. Your total unassigned fund balance is 3.3 million at the end of the year, so in very good financial position. And then on page 20, we have the general fund statement of revenues, expenditures, and change in fund balance. There is very little change in the general fund for the year. It increased by 75,000, which is pretty minimal for the year, in spite of many, many projects going on. And this is a picture here of your general fund revenues over the last five years. You can see in the general fund, property taxes jumped quite a bit this year. State shared revenue was pretty even. Charges were even. And the other category jumped up quite a bit due to interest and gains on investments primarily. So you can see the property taxes here increased just because of increases in taxable values. Here's another longer-term look at your property tax revenues. You can see as it, over the last 10 years, it's kind of just gone up steadily, and that's good to see. And this is your expenditures in the general fund. You can see for 2023, the gold bars in each of the departments, or functional areas, I guess, are increased. And that's primarily, almost in every case, due to increased capital spending. So there was a lot going on during the year. Public safety, there was a little bit of an increase in the Shays contribution as well, so. And this is your expenditures as a percent of the total expenditures, kind of just an interesting thing to look at. You can see the culture and recreation, that gray bar near the bottom there. That's, there was a huge park project that started in 2023, so that drove that one up, and the other ones came down. But that was a pretty significant impact on all of those. Another thing we like to look at is fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers. And you can see it went down. I just mentioned that expenditures were up, so that drives your total percentage here down, even though fund balance stayed about the same. And then just in your utilities funds, this is electric, water, sewer, and your other non-major enterprises. But the electric fund, you can see it's about the same as it was last year, positive income. Cash is roughly at 7.2 million, which is down about 900,000 from previous years. There was, cash is down 900,000, but there was 4.3 million spent out of cash on capital items in the electric fund. So that's in good financial position. The water fund, again, a positive increase. Cash is held at about 4.4 million, which is down 700,000 from the previous year. Now, the sewer fund, again, a positive. You can see in 2020, there was not a good year in the sewer fund. Cash, however, in the sewer fund stays at 5.3 million, which is down just very, very slightly from the previous year. And then here in the, these are other fund balances, funds, fund balances. You can see your street improvements fund decreased significantly during the year with all the capital items or capital projects going on in the streets. That was used for capital on streets. The other major and local street funds use some money on the street projects, but it's primarily the street improvements fund. And again, we talked about the general fund earlier. And then just by way of a couple of other reporting items in the footnotes to the financial statement, footnote number two on page 37. This is, we have to report to the state any budget overages in each of the funds. There were, there were five minor overages in the general fund, nothing of significance. The state has a 10% overage leeway, so nothing significant there. The street improvements fund, however, was over budget by about 260,000. There was some work not budgeted that happened right near the end of the year that had to be recorded. So that's over about 260,000 there. And then, I don't have any more pictures, just my, and then footnote number seven. Just wanted to point out on debt, that there was no new debt issued. That's on page 46 and 47. No new debt issued. The bonds are being paid off according to their scheduled payments. And then one other thing to mention, it's kind of a hot button at most municipalities, is the pension plan. Your pension here is in good shape. It's been funded over the years at good levels. This year, the pension is reported as of 12/31/22 by MERS, which is the Michigan Employee Retirement System. And this year, it's at 73% funded. Previous years, it went from 87% in the previous year, down to 73%. But we're hoping that some of that recovers for the year ended 12/31/23. There's 130 pages of information here. If you'd like any more, I'd be happy to address any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for your report.
All right, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Sure.
So on, and I've had limited review, unfortunately, but on page 12, with regard to the unassigned.
Oh, excuse me, can you lower your microphone so we can hear you?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. On page 12, with regard to unassigned. So that went up 5.5% about from last year. You know, how much is the, you know, how discretionary type, you know, how flush is that? And how does one decide what can and where it all goes?
So your question is near the bottom of the page there, the unassigned fund balance of 3.3 million?
Yes.
Okay, so that's 45% of your total fund balance, but, oh, can we go back to a slide?
But it had gone up 5.5% from last year?
Yes, so the unassigned is a product of whatever is not restricted, committed, or assigned. And the City Council, and in some cases, staff can assign or commit various amounts of fund balance. There's some, in some cases, it can be restricted, which means it's set aside by outside sources. And in some cases, it can be considered non-spendable, which means there's prepaid items or inventory items that says you can't spend it. So the unassigned amount at year end was at, I don't even remember, so I have to go look. We have a percentage in here. There we go. See, unassigned was just under 40%. That, now that, I should correct that. That includes your assigned, unassigned, and committed. It's at 40, 39%. Our rule of thumb is to keep your unassigned at 25%, because that meets about three months' worth of expenditures. So you're well over that threshold. In your case, your assigned and committed fund balance is pretty minimal, it's about 300 and some thousand, if I remember right. So it's in very good shape, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to accept the report?
I'll make a motion to accept the audit report for fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. The audit report for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 has been accepted. Thank you so much. Next, the City Council will be asked to consider a motion to receive the general fund quarterly financial report. Hello, Michelle?
Good evening.
Would you like to talk? Go ahead.
Sure, if you want to.
Please. Do you want me to put it on there?
Okay, this is the quarter end 12/31/23, so we're halfway through the fifth. Okay, this is the, we're around twelve thirty-one twenty-three, so we're halfway through the fiscal year. On the report, we show that we have seven million five hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars in our revenues, and that's at ninety-one point six one percent of the budget. And there were some explanations given, items such as the tax collection, where majority of it is in the summer with the library and the city taxes. And right now, the senior services is on the winter bill. And there were also, there was a grant that was received in this fiscal year that was budgeted for last year. And that's a couple of the reasons. Our expenditures are at five million one hundred and fifty thousand. That's at fifty-two point three one percent of the budget. So that's really good tracking for halfway through the year. And right now, we have revenues of our expenditures of two point four million. And it gives us a fund balance right now of seven point seven three one million. Are there any questions?
Any questions? I just want to thank you for all your hard work and your attention to detail. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to receive the general fund quarterly financial report?
I'll move to receive the general fund quarterly financial report.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just also like to thank Michelle and her staff for the great work, both from this item on the agenda and the previous one also, because I know you worked hard on keeping our books straight, so thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the general fund quarterly financial report has been received by city council. Moving on, city council will be asked to consider accepting a gift from the First Hebrew Congregation to improve the aesthetics and upgrade the entrance into the southeast edition of Lakeview Cemetery located on East Wilson. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have a donation coming from the First Hebrew Congregation that is looking to make some, some improvements on the southeastern portion of Lakeview Cemetery. We do have our Parks Superintendent Erin Preep here, as well as some membership from the Hebrew congregation, in case council has any question. The proposed project includes a new and a wider entrance into the cemetery. This would be very beneficial for leaf trucks, snowplows, and equipment used for burials, which also includes baghoe, dump truck, and vault company equipment. The proposed plan also includes a new pillar to match the existing pillar, and a new black face, uh, black fencing along East Wilson, which would match the fencing along Blue Star Highway. So there's some really nice improvements that's being proposed here. As part of that new pillar and fencing, there would, they would, there would have to be a relocation of the old meter pit and put that inside the cemetery fence. All told, this project cost is at forty-five thousand six hundred and forty. This, this donation has been reviewed, believe, by the Parks Commission for discussion and consideration. My understanding is that they, this was presented by the membership of the congregation, and we do have the Parks Commission meeting, giving some detail. I think it was approved.
Correct?
Correct.
Correct. So Parks Commission has recommended this donation be approved by the city council. I've got staff here, as well as the congregation here, to answer any question by the council.
Any questions?
I just want to commend them for the gift. I drive on Wilson frequently, and it's much needed, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say as well, I think from the plan, it looks really great. It'll be such an improvement in that area, so I'm also thankful.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve and accept the gift from the First Hebrew Congregation to improve the aesthetics and upgrade the entrance into the southeast edition of Lakeview Cemetery?
I move to accept the gift from the First Hebrew Congressional Church, as read by the mayor.
I'll second. All in favor, say yes?
Yes. Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the gift has been accepted from the First Hebrew Congregation to improve the aesthetics of the southeast edition of Lakeview Cemetery. Thank you so much for your gift. We appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. Moving on, the city council will be asked to consider the adoption of Resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero seven, a resolution recognizing the South Haven instrumental music boosters as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. Kate.
Yes, so the South Haven Instrumental Music Boosters, or SHIM, if you don't, if you love your acronyms, is a parent-run nonprofit organization. This nonprofit is looking to run a fundraiser, a fifty-fifty raffle, so that they can raise funds for the music boosters. So they're asking this council to recognize them as a nonprofit in the eyes of the state of Michigan, so it'll be the execution of the resolution that was attached, two thousand twenty-four dash zero seven, so they can, can operate this fundraiser.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for this?
I move to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-four zero seven, a resolution recognizing the South Haven instrumental music boosters as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for purposes of obtaining a charitable gaming license.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? No? The motion passes. And we will, we have adopted Resolution two thousand twenty-four, recognizing SHIM for a, as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. And we're looking forward to the spring gala. Thank you for being here. Moving on, the city council should consider a motion to create an ad hoc committee of three council members to establish standards of excellence or a code of conduct. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. So coming out of our, our January training with the Michigan Municipal League, we were introduced to this concept of having a standard of excellence or a code of conduct for the, for the city council to refer back to as to how to conduct meetings, how to, how to interact with each other. And also, it could be expanded to, to cover how minutes are taken and maybe how minutes are, can, conduct the meetings, similar to our Robert's Rules of Order training. So with that, kind of relying on what we heard in the January meeting, it was brought up that maybe we should formulate this ad hoc committee. In talking with several council members, there is some interest in serving on the ad hoc committee, which would be three members, so less than our, our quorum. And that would be to help formulate that, those standards, come back, and then present that to the entire board for approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to establish the standards of excellence or code of conduct with a committee of three members?
I'll move to create an ad hoc committee of three council members to establish standards of excellence or code of conduct.
I'll second. Any discussion? And I am looking for three volunteers. Some of you contacted me, George?
Yeah, I would, I would volunteer to be on that.
And I have offered to volunteer on that.
And Jeff?
I have as well.
Great. Jeff, George, and Mary, thank you for volunteering.
A question for Kate, would there be a staff person that we would get assigned to us to help?
That's correct.
Okay.
More likely, myself, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
We probably need a chaperone.
Well, at least cookies will, I'm sure, be provided, so.
Any other questions? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes to create an ad hoc committee of three council members to establish standards of excellence or code of conduct. Moving on, thirteen A, a discussion on lifeguards. Kate.
Well, I, this was kind of a late addition, so I guess I'll defer to Councilmember Wendy as to what you're looking for.
Well, I thought it might be, I know you were planning to address this in your city manager comments, but maybe we could just kind of hear a summary of where you're at. But I also thought, as a council as well, it'd be nice just to be able to discuss it. And I guess my biggest concern is if we keep it attached to the upcoming priority setting for the coming fiscal year, we lose the opportunity to implement something potentially this coming beach season. And I guess that's my, my biggest concern. So I'm wondering where everyone stands on that. I just wanted to talk about it.
Okay. I do know that water safety is a topic that we all care deeply about. And if you review our city documents and our meetings, you'll see that it's a subject that has been discussed and researched regularly for some time. I have talked with a number of you, a number of the council members, and I've been asked to look into what it could take to have a lifeguard program. So there's a number of moving parts to create such a substantial program, which is quite a bit of a deviation to what we have been doing for the last twenty years. So I, I and my staff have been looking into that. So there's been some fact-finding and some investigating that's been occurring in preparation for our meetings in March. So March eleventh is our priority setting that we have established, and we do have a facilitator coming down to assist with that. I also know that it would probably be very good for the council to hear some, some presentations, or at least get an understanding about what is being asked of the council for a number of the priority items. So I thought maybe a priority setting kind of primer, if you will, for March fourth would be available. And that would be a time to kind of provide information to the city council and learn more about what they're looking for prior to walking into priority setting. So I do know that there is a push for having a lifeguard program this year. However, there's also a capacity issue. Do you want a, a good life safety program? Do you want a safe program, or do you want a fast program? At best, I can give you two out of three. So I guess that's what you all are looking for. But I need to know at what point, what, what, what you all want. And it's always been my role for you, to provide you with the information so you can make informed decisions. The last thing I want to do is provide you with half-information or information I do not completely have for you all to make a decision, and then be, be unhappy with the decision you made because you did not have all the information. So in my mind, this is very much fact-finding that's been occurring. And I'd like to present to the council when I have that. I know that there are some that have provided their information that we just received today. I'm happy to look at that. I also know those numbers were two years ago. I also know that, again, what kind of a program does council want that is ultimately a value-based decision that is undertaken by this board? And I would prefer to give you the information that we understand, that we know is going to be taken to, to implement any kind of program. Just briefly, in the hallway, we kind of talked about communications and the challenges we had with just the code enforcement portion. That's not even adding, excuse me, another level on top of that, and working with an outside agency, which is Van Buren County Dispatch. They are not our agency. We don't get to dictate what they're going to do. So we have to work within the confines of them, and if they cannot accommodate what we would like, we have to find alternate methods. So again, I ask you, which kind of a program do you want? Do you want a safe program? Do you want a good program? Or do you want a fast program? So that's why I want to give, give you the information, so you can make that kind of decision.
And when would you give us this kind of, you know, give us a description of each one?
Well, my hope is to, again, provide you with some options so that when we walk into priority setting, you're ready to make a decision as to what this council wants staff to work on.
This is in March?
March eleventh.
Yep. Yep. And if council wants to have that primer, that workshop, that would be March fourth. So that is a time for us to come together and get some, get some information that you would have walking into our March eleventh meeting.
George?
Just some of my thoughts on lifeguards. I'm not necessarily against lifeguard. I have been certified as a lifeguard in the past. I remember I was here in South Haven when we had lifeguards. But I do feel that the, the reason we do priorities before we ask staff to take action is so that the pri, the, the actions staff are taking are in line with the priorities that this council has established. So I really think that the proper approach is to, is to address this during the priority session. I realize that means we won't have lifeguards this year. I personally think we're already past that point where we could get a, a, a good lifeguard program in place for the start of this summer season. I also remember when we first started talking about this, we did a community survey. And it seems to me, if I remember right, the, the survey results were not indicative of overwhelming support in the community for lifeguards. There was slightly more people in favor of lifeguards, but it wasn't, I would consider, overwhelming. There also was a subcommittee that was formed at that time to look at beach safety. And the recommendations coming out of that subcommittee did not include lifeguards. So I, I think there's, there is obviously a lot of support for lifeguards, but I think we need to follow our process and do the priority setting first and make sure we have all the information before we go forward.
Joe.
I think before the community or even city council can make a decision whether we're pro or not for lifeguards, there's some real big issues. You have to have information on it, and that's, and back to what George is saying, making it on our priorities. I'm all for putting it on priorities. But before I can support or not support lifeguards, and I'm leaning very much towards them, there's big issues we have to have answered. We have to know what is really the city's legality with lifeguards? Are we at legal risk by having them, and if someone were to drown? And I keep hearing different sides of this. The other one is, how do we hire the people? Do we want to have a third party do the hiring? Will city staff be over top of this company or, or not? And that's a big issue. I always thought that was going to be the biggest stumbling block until I talked to a couple of these organizations, and they said they could do the hiring, staffing, and handle it. Or they can do a hybrid, where we kind of manage them and they manage the hiring. The other issue is the cost. We're always going to talk about cost. And I remember, I think it was Channel Three, but the local TV station said, they came up with this idea, I have no idea if it's right or wrong, but they said we could increase the parking fees down by the beach, and it would cover a good part, if not all, the cost of lifeguards. I think that's, that's an amazing thing, if we could do that. And then it comes down to, would tourists be willing to pay for their own safety? And I suspect yes. And I have no problem, as a resident, also putting some money into that. As far as the timing, the frustration I think a lot of people have is that we've talked about this a year ago, and we ran out of time. And now we're talking about it, it's finally come up again, and it feels like we're under the gun that we're going to run out of time. And when it comes to people's lives and safety, I don't know why we keep running out of time, how this keeps happening, and I'm not pointing the fingers at anyone. I just want this scene to be on a faster track so we can start making decisions. I, I, I fear for the well-being of our own community, and I fear for the, the tourists. And we always talk about tourists being so important to our city economically and the fun. I love tourists coming here. I don't want them to be at risk on our beaches. And as Lisa Vick said, she grew up, I grew up, on New Jersey beaches where we had lifeguards. It was a given. And I think I said at city council, one of the beaches I still like to go to every couple of years is, I think it is Cape May that told me they've never in the history of the city had a drowning, and they have lifeguards. That's pretty impressive. So I just want to move this up quick, not make a decision quick, but get it on our agenda so we start to talk about it, get the information, put it on our priorities. But I want to speed it up a little, but no shortcuts. And I don't know if that's helpful, my comments, but that's my thoughts.
Mary.
Yes. As I was talking with people, especially near Water Street, they are like, I just don't want to hear sirens anymore. They, they just, it's, it's very disturbing to our residents to hear sirens going down to the lake, not knowing what's going to come of it. And I echo what Joe said with regard to safety. The beach safety committee, I mean, that's, I went to several of them, and I share frustrations with other people with the way it was compartmentalized. They didn't look at synergies. And I think it's fair to say, some of the members were frustrated and were disappointed that lifeguards were not recommended. And I think it is time to revisit that. I'm not saying a committee needs to be formed, although I had suggested a committee. I'm not saying a committee needs to be formed, although I had suggested a committee to start because I suggested we needed to have that start from the very first January meeting. So we're already a month past that, and we lost that leeway. A group of us met, including Mayor-elect Brown with Heather, and Cam was on webcam with Greg Field, Dr. Field, out of Holland, and he has a doctorate in water safety, I believe. And he also is, he and Sergeant DeBoer know each other very well. And I think those are two local experts who are very familiar with our unique beaches. Greg Field surfs on our beaches. He lives in the Holland area, so it's a quick buzz down to take advantage of our waves. And I would like to see more community involvement, as Nancy Nett commented, and trying, trying not to reinvent the wheel, but trying to have synergies with what people in the area already know and what we might be able to do to jumpstart it, not to do quick, but actually have a, a full system proposed, or know what alternatives might be an option. And I would just like to see more information gathering, not by staff per se, but accepting some of the information that we have, or maybe having a meeting, and it might facilitate it. I know Kate had reached out to someone in California, but I would really like to try to start closer to home where they're, they surf on our beaches. They are familiar with the wave currents and the, the effects from the piers. I mean, that's how they get their waves for surfing. I know Heather has done a lot and has been involved, not only locally, but on the state level and on the national level, and has made a lot of great connections. And it seems to me that if we got a small group of people together, we might be able to have a base upon which to build quickly to actually be able to do something this year. If it doesn't pan out, unfortunately, the most important thing is to revisit our current Marty Jordan Beach Safety Program. I mean, a year ago, I provided, I identified areas for improvement. And I know others provided recommendations for improvement, and I know Bobby Pratt and Heather have recently recommended comments towards that. And I don't want what happened last year to happen again, where it's brought to us at the second meeting in March, and time is of the essence, and if any changes are going to be made, we have to approve it now. I would like to get some changes made based on our knowledge. I'm not saying I'm an expert, but I've been talking with a lot of experts since over a year ago. And I've been involved with helping prepare educational information. And I've been reading a lot of information online and, and studying. So I would, I appreciate efforts reaching out to California. But as I mentioned when we spoke on Friday, I would really like to see getting more people in our local area, potentially more closer time zone, and intimately familiar with our lake to, if we can't get lifeguards, we can at least get a beach program that will address a lot of the concerns that Heather has, has brought to our attention, is intimately familiar with, with her feet on the ground handing out pamphlets, meeting with tourists and families on the beach.
Wendy?
Thank you. I just forgot all of my thoughts. Okay. Well, I am a little frustrated, I guess, because I, it wasn't my understanding that it needed to be a council priority to have this happen. I just, I guess I don't understand why it's not necessarily an operational thing that's part of the beach safety program. So I, I guess I don't understand why this has to be a priority.
If I may.
Once a year.
This is a significant deviation from policy. There is an assumption of care. There's a duty of care that the council would be agreeing to. There should be a good discussion between you and your attorney in figuring out what, what you're agreeing to, what you'd like it to look like, and this has to be run by your, your liability carrier. Okay? This is, I think, not an insignificant change, and I think that you're also talking about a large program that would be gearing up on something that the county, that the staff haven't done for some time. We're talking at least two decades, and I'm not even sure if that's going to meet muster from what I'm hearing. So I think that that's why I do need this to be a council priority. I need to know how much allocation of staff resources to put towards this. That's why I do think this does need to be a council priority. Now, if you all decide it is already a priority, then you can make whatever decisions, and then I have to execute as best as I can. But I need to know exactly that you understand what you're undertaking and that you're giving me clear direction to do what I need to do.
Okay. I hear that. I just feel like we've been talking about it so long, and I haven't heard that before, like that this is how we need to do it. So that is great to know. But also, just to George's point about the previous committee and even the survey, I just, I feel like the climate of our town has changed a little bit. And we've had drownings, not this last year, thank goodness, but the previous year. So I understand that they thought that was the best decision at the time, but it seems like things have changed significantly since then, and even just the climate of the town and what our residents want. I, I feel like it's time to listen, so I'm not sure. It sounds like we do need to wait until the March 4th workshop and a potential March 11 vote. I'm just happy to know the timeline that we can work toward.
Jeff, any comments?
Yeah. I wasn't prepared to talk about beach safety tonight. To kind of dovetail on what Wendy was saying, like beach safety and the Marty Jordan plan, I don't, I don't think that's something we prioritize. I think that's boilerplate, that we, we have to have that all the time in the same way that when people come home and they flip on the light switch, they expect the lights to come on, their trash should be picked up, their streets should get plowed. Beach safety should be our boilerplate, what we always do. And that's why we revisit the Marty Jordan plan every year, make corrections as needed, take advice from experts if we need to make changes. So, so I'm happy we have that and we continue to work on that. So then I think the big change is lifeguards, and that's where I tend to agree with almost everything that was said, that we still have a lot of questions we need from staff. One guest did suggest that Kate or the city staff was stalling us. That's, no, the staff serves at our pleasure. They do whatever we ask. Any slowness on this is on us, not the staff. But yeah, I do have questions about legal. I do have questions about money. I saw that same news show that Joe was referencing, and Kate and I grabbed our, our cell phones, and we were trying to crunch the numbers, and they were coming up. They said, raise it $10, and it'll raise $90,000. And Kate and I just couldn't get the math. What if it rains? That doesn't, we don't get parking paid for in the winter. So I didn't see how they came up with $90,000, and I still have all of Cam's stuff. This is the third set I have now. And it was a $230,000 program. So where's that money coming from? Again, it's important. We can try and find it. I mean, we'll try and find it. But the parking is only one piece, and so is money. I have questions about money. What about the other beaches? We have seven beaches. We're just going to patrol the two. So then, again, we need to talk to legal. We got an email recently about lifeguards, and I've been trying to get answers out of St. Joe. St. Joe can't find lifeguards, and so they put up the sign, "So admit your own risk." So what are the other beaches doing to staff? Because only Edward, no, not Edwardsburg, New Buffalo, and St. Joe have lifeguards. So how, what are they doing to recruit lifeguards? And how can we recruit lifeguards? Yeah, so that's kind of, I hadn't even thought about coordinating with the dispatch, and so, you know, Kate brought that up. So those are just the questions off the top of my head, and so I'm sure there'll be more. And so that's why it will ta, and that's just lifeguards. Beach safety, absolutely, we got to do that. We owe that. We are, yes, that. Marty Jordan Beach, all the time, boilerplate. But lifeguards, that's, I think, what we're talking about, and happy to have that discussion. We need staff to, getting your marching orders now so then we'll get some of those answers, and then we can take steps to start it, and we'll get solicit more information from the public as well, more opinions from the public.
Thank you. Letitia?
I've talked to several people in the community about beach safety, and I know how important it is to many residents, especially in Ward 1. And I totally agree with what has been said already. And I was listening to what Kate said about, you know, we could go ahead and push it through, but we don't know the legalities, you know, what we might face. And so I think it is really important that we understand and we know all the ramifications that we might, you know, have to face up the road. But I think it is important that we do try to come to some type of remedy for our community because it is important. Beach safety is important. And I don't know Kate, or the mayor, if we can be creative when it comes to finding lifeguards, because I heard someone say that there is a shortage. And I know George said he used to do it.
And you're retired now, George.
And he's retired. He's retired. But seriously, I, I just think that we could, maybe there's some things we could do to be creative, to come up with some, you know, lifeguards, since we know that there is some shortage. And I think that we could be, we should be open to hearing some of the things that the community has to say. You know, maybe they have some good ideas that we could do to come up with some lifeguards and to promote beach safety because it is important. One life is one too many.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I agree with what people have said. You know, as a mom, it has always made me nervous to have my kids down at the beach, even with, you know, with me watching and with them having, had taken swimming lessons. So of course, I'm always nervous about the lake, and I think that it's, we've heard from so many people, and it is a huge safety issue. But I agree with George that the proper approach is to discuss it in our priority setting meeting in March. So I look forward to that meeting. And it sounds like we've discussed it. Anything else?
So will we have a, a workshop or not?
I'm, I'm going to put that to you all. I know that we're a little workshop-heavy, but March 4th would be the date that we could have that prior to our priority setting. I'm looking to, to you all. Does that fit within your calendars?
So March 4th would be a workshop about lifeguards?
And other, any, any other priority items that come up, but I was thinking definitely, definitely lifeguards would be on there.
And then March 11th is the other priority and budget setting meeting?
Right. That would be our priority setting meeting with Al Vanenburg, the Kent County Administrator, former city council, or city manager. So it would be like a primer, you all to hear all the things that have been brought up, to be determined. I'm not entirely sure what this would all look like, but definitely would be an option to flesh out any ideas or get some input.
So it would be March 4th?
Yes.
At what time?
Five or 5:30.
I'm available.
I believe I am. I just have to check.
Okay. It would be open to the public, yes.
Okay. Sounds like we're in agreement for March 4th?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, the city council will be asked to receive an update from Police Chief Natalie Thompson.
I beg your pardon. Chief Thompson is not here tonight. She sends her apologies. But we do have her report in the packet for your reference. When we do have some updated information from Icebreaker, I'm happy to share that for, with you. And of course, we can get some updated information to share with, with the community at our, at our next update. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, public comment for citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. Hi, Dan.
How you doing?
How are you?
Good. Thanks for meeting with me on Wednesday before the Uker meeting.
Anytime.
Uker, and for Kate, meet with me on Friday. George, like George says, you've got priorities. The priorities is set, what's going to be done. And our number one priority last year was SDRs. We only have five more months to go. So hopefully, something is going to be done. I sent you that email today on what had been marked up by, by staff on the December 4th meeting as a starting point for what maybe the consensus of city council wanted. And because of a new council, I would think that would, it could be done real quickly. And we need to get this thing done and through the PC and approved. And I just passing out to you what, what the summary of the 566 voters said in a couple of years ago. SDRs are a business that primarily benefits the owners, the investors, and the visitors. People said that 66% of the benefits accrue to the owners, investors, and visitors. 75% agree that these are businesses, not family residences. And you know, it was, it was, it was settled by a court case that these are businesses in residential areas, R1. Also, SDR businesses are crowding out permanent residents. Voters responding want SDR businesses reduced, restricted, or relocated to preserve their neighborhoods. 72% said business SDRs should be restricted. 57% said there's not enough permanent residents. 65% also said that SDRs should be restricted or reduced. 238 responses said to restrict, reduce, relocate, address density, and location of residential areas, and lack of affordable housing. And then the last part was, had to do with the financing. It's a pain for itself. So I, I would like to see a plan. I talked with Annie, and I sent the calendar with the email so that maybe we can have a plan to get this done. Because, again, it's our four cycle. If we don't get anything done by July, it's not going to happen. And that's when the physical year ends, the end of June. And that was your number one priority last year, and nothing's getting done. So you set a priority. Is it just smoking beers, or is it checking a box? Are we going to get something done? Because the residents want action. They want reform. And if it's not going to be done, I, I hope it doesn't get to that point, but it may end up going to referendum. You see a lot of the cities around here, St. Joe, they released our restriction in SDRs, and they had 14 lawsuits. They want 13 of them, okay, because the law is on their side. And I, I don't know if we're afraid of lawsuits, or afraid of who's controlling this town, or whatever, but something has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Annie.
My name's Kate Thornton. I live at 325 Indiana Apartment 201. And I would like to inform the council of how business is being done with the residents. I have a file for two and a half years of the, of the new administration that took over, harassing me to be evicted. Residents are afraid to come and speak up. But of course, I'm, I'm not afraid of the administration. This past Friday, they came to my door for another inspection of the metal heaters in our apartments to see if the furniture was next to them. They're always inspecting something, and I just got tired of them coming into my home. Mr. John Gill put his foot against my door so I could not close it. I told him he was not welcome, and he wasn't coming in my home. I made an incident report with the South Haven Police Department. It's a constant battle over there, and everybody's afraid of being evicted. And I just wanted to inform you of how the South Haven Housing Commission is conducting business. I've got two and a half years of flyers, harassment, discrimination. And I paid my rent. He just wanted me out. And there's a lot of residents that feel the same way I do. So you're informed. I don't know who they, the office is accountable to. But I've called HUD. I've made many acquired, requiring questions of getting some kind of help. I should be able, I'm 68 years old, and I should be able to live in my apartment peacefully. And that isn't happening at River Terrace or Harborview. I have informed you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Fatima Tucker. I live at 1051 Phoenix Street. I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I'm going to bring up the short-term rental issue. I'm here to advocate for the residents of South Haven, not only for myself, but for the people who don't yet realize their homes will be worth less than some of their neighbors when one day they try to list them on the MLS. And it won't be because the residents didn't take care of their homes or their spaces. It will be because they didn't realize that not obtaining a business rental permit would devalue their home. To attach value to a home based on possession of a business permit, you're picking long-term winners and losers. So my husband and I listed our house last spring because I lost my business permit. I didn't get it in time. I didn't renew it. And I was told, so we put it on the market. It sat on the market all summer. And I had multiple people come, buyers, and say that they'd be willing to buy the house if it had the business rental permit. And then my realtor told me that we might have to consider lowering, lowering the price by $100,000 because I didn't have the business permit. So I just want you to all be aware of that issue, that like there, you know, there will be people that have been in their homes for 50 years that don't realize when they sell it, they're going to get less because they don't have the business rental permit. For the sake of the people who take care of their homes and live in South Haven, I ask that you strongly reconsider business short-term rentals being attached to the properties. If the highly coveted permits return to a lottery upon the sale of the home, then everyone will be in a more equal playing field. There's no reason I can think of for the business permits to go into the hands of strangers buying these homes that already have the business permits instead of back into a lottery where residents can have a chance again to put their homes or make, you know, get the business permit. The number of people who benefit from that is very small. I think empty nesters might want to rent their homes one day when their kids go away to college and they have extra bedrooms and they can move out for, you know, eight weeks and make a decent amount of money on their homes. So I would love to see those people be able to rent their house for more than 28 days. It's a lot to pack up all your things, put in different sheets, different dishes, take out your personal items for 28 days. So I guess two issues. I'd like the business permits to not be attached to the homes when they're sold so that everyone gets a chance and they go back in the lottery. And the other is to maybe extend the 28 days for people that would like to have that ability to rent their home for more days. Thank you.
Thank you, Fatima. Hi, George.
Hello. My name is George Ebride. And I live at, pardon me, 214 Superior Street. I come to you today with concerns about South Haven's future affordable housing and two possible solutions. So what is concerning about South Haven's future? The report cards of the last four census tells the story. In 1990, the population was 5,563, down 6.4% from 1980. In 2000, the population was 5,021, down 9.7%. In 2010, the population was 4,403, down 12.3%. In 2020, the population was 3,964, down 10%. That is a loss of 35% of permanent residents in 34 years. How can we change this sad state of affairs? What will bring young, young adults and young families to live in South Haven to lead and build our future? The answer may be in what other cities in southwest Michigan have been doing since South Haven investigated in affordable housing. One way is to build housing. I was proud of the city council for its leadership in investigating the vacant Overton property and making it affordable housing for young families whose children could then walk to our schools. At the same time, the leaders of Benton Harbor and Whirlpool Corporation worked together to build the 80-unit Amagene Hall flats that is now complete and welcoming tenants and Whirlpool employees. South Haven's problem was placing all our eggs in the one basket of Habitat Developer and not having a Plan B or a Plan C. A second way to create affordable housing is to encourage young adults to build their own homes. At the last city council meeting, I suggested thinking of ideas outside the box to offer cash incentives or tax moratoria to attract young adults and families. To my surprise, I easily found that leaders to our south created Move to Michigan program to offer remote workers cash incentives of $10,000 to $15,000 and added benefits bringing the total incentives to $20,000. What cities are a part of Move to Michigan? St. Joseph, Benton Harbor, Stevensville, and other townships, but not South Haven. What stipulations come with these incentives? The recipients need to build homes worth at least $200,000 and to send their children to the public schools for at least 10 years. Not bad for $20,000. To our north, Holland created the PILOT or Payment in Lue of Taxes Program to aid in the creation of affordable housing. What is the legacy of South Haven's accomplishments so far? We have the prospect of a five-story building that will change our city forever and certainly increase traffic congestion. Does the business plan for this structure include affordable rental apartments or condos?
One minute.
For the workers in that building? Or for young families? Not likely. Who are the individuals we might attract in a program? We could attract pastors to our churches, schoolteachers, police and fire department workers, and other workers in those stores and restaurants in that five-story building. Other prospects, perhaps we might be able to include the people I respected most in college, the veteran military, or the military veterans who put aside their own futures to serve our country. Perhaps we might be lucky enough to attract another high school teacher like Jim McLaughlin. So now is the time for me to suggest another out-of-the-box idea. How can the exorbitant home prices come down to affordable levels? This time, the council led the way with the limit of SDR certificates.
Thank you, George.
Let's lower certificates by 10% a year.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. Real quickly, Mary, let me know if I'm getting close to that line of suggesting that if, the social media is very powerful. I think we all know social media is very powerful. I would suggest to any council member, if you have anything derogatory that's offensive to or pointing towards or divisive toward members of the council, I would suggest that you take it off your Facebook page. It only adds to more division. So I don't know if that, I assume that I'm okay by saying that no one responded. But yeah, we got to get that off of Facebook. Now, regards to the city council, I mean, not the city council, affordable housing, I want to just piggyback on the gentleman that came up before me. You all know that I keep pushing for affordable housing, affordable housing. I feel a little bit like Wendy, Councilmember Wendy. It seems like we've kicked this can down the road for a lot of years. I've been a part of a lot of workshops. Gil Patrick giving us spills over and over again, and we're no closer now than we were for three, four years ago. So it's getting a little discouraging, especially I'm hearing a lot of people, the hardship of people needing housing and stuff like that. So I like to try to be a part of the resolution. So I've been invited to, first of all, my daughter was one that was chosen to introduce the governor in Ben Harbor. She came out there to kind of highlight her, her financial support. And as far as her commitment towards affordable housing, the Ben Harbor area is getting it. As the gentleman said, Whirlpool put up a nice project. And we've asked others, the council members, to go down with us because my daughter happened to stay in the one that they just completed. And as I, as of today, I'm not sure if anybody's planning on going with us. But I do have an opportunity to go to Kalamazoo on Wednesday with Carrie who, to see a project that went up in Kalamazoo. So it's not like we have to reinvent the wheel. There are a lot of ways that these projects are going up. I noticed in South Haven, we pass millages for all kind of stuff. We pass millages for everything we want. We got great grant writers, apparently. But when it comes to affordable housing, we can't connect the dots. We can't connect the dots. We have been trying to connect these dots for four years. And it seemed like with the bright minds that we have in South Haven, we can't connect the dots. That's very discouraging. Well, I look at, you know, trying to, you know, be, do some groundwork to try to figure out what are some of the steps that we could take. Well, the city of South Haven, the city of Kalamazoo, they use the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority that provides grants to, for support of the affordable housing. That was one way that Kalamazoo was able to get something done. And then Kalamazoo County approved a housing millage which support building of affordable housing. And when they, when I went through and looked at the layout, it was only like 20 some dollars, 30 some dollars a year that the taxpayers would have to pay. But they have affordable housing projects going up. And it's called a housing millage. These are just some steps and things that they use to get housing, the housing, affordable housing for people. So I'm just, I'm just pushing this council to look outside the box. And I've met with several people, and I, I thought it was a great idea because you guys got a lot on your plate. Maybe perhaps Kate, council, mayor, that you all put together, create a steering committee. A steering committee that will do the things that I'm doing, going to these different projects out there. Thank you. Steering committee will actually do some of the legwork for you guys, come back, work with the council to try to move this ball a little further than we did two, two, three, four years ago. So, you know, I feel the frustration of those who's pushing for lifeguard and water safety because it seemed like we, you know, it's just to me. And I say this, I close with this. It kind of, in comparison with the housing, but you know, life, life, of course, is no comparison. Losing a life is no comparison. But I will say this in closing remarks. It sends me and Council Wilkins, Councilmember Wilkins, when we're sitting outside enjoying the hot summer and the fun that comes with being in South Haven in the summertime, and when we hear the sound of a helicopter going over our heads. Every time we hear that helicopter, it hurts us as much as the person that's involved because we know
Thank you.
that something is going on.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
David Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. I'd like to echo some of the comments that have been made about short-term rentals. I believe that the year before last, it was number two priority. This year, it's number one priority. And we are quickly approaching the end of this year. I think it's time to bring some concrete proposals forward for a vote. We have talked. We've had studies on and on and on and on. And it's really time to move. I was listening to Ms. Tucker make a point about a business short-term rental maybe being worth $100,000. I'm not unsympathetic to her. But at the same time, Joe Wilkins just talked about connecting the dots. Short-term business rental, if that's true, is worth $100,000. And affordability is an issue. Can we connect those dots? It seems pretty clear to me. And yes, I would like my house, our house, to be worth as much as possible when we sell it. But in the meantime, I'm a resident here, and I would like quality of life. So to me, it's not, I, I'm not, I'm not in my house as an investor. I'm in my house as a resident. So please take care of my wife and I with our needs and with the other residents who have been asking for reform for years and years and becoming very, very frustrated. It's time to move the ball. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Carrie Weber. I am actually a short-term rental second homeowner here. And I just wanted to come up because I've had some good conversations in the last couple of weeks with a lot of the few full-time residents and Bishop Wilkins. And wanted to offer, like he said, some solution. And I know that he brought it up last week, I think it was. Me and my husband set up a meeting with Bogman Developments in Kalamazoo and went and saw their affordable housing. We saw a two-bedroom apartment. It was very nice. They had patio. And they had right on site, they have childcare that the kids, little kids were looking out the windows at us as we were looking at their site. They have 18 units on that particular item or that particular block. And it was a brown site as well, contaminated that they did. And they're now doing another one called the Creamery. And they've invited us and all of you, if any of you would be willing to join us on Wednesday from 2:00 to 4:00 to come see their development. So I just wanted to come and invite you. If you would like to see them, they're very nice. I believe Joe is coming. And we would love to have more people join us.
Thank you, Carrie. I'm sorry. Any more comments?
You can email us if you have additional thoughts.
Hi, Pat.
Hi. Pat Gaston, 97 Superior Street. I guess I would like to also reiterate that I'd like to see some movement on the short-term rental situation. I don't know the lady's name, but she might have had an idea I'd never thought of that basically these certificates don't go with the property that when they sell, they go into a lottery again. I've never even thought about that. I have thought about the whole personal SDR. And it's just an unworkable program. You know, I think it started with, is with, to try and kind of help, you know, Uncle Larry and Aunt Sal. And they just wanted to rent a couple of weeks to maybe pay their taxes or something. But it's kind of like no good deed goes unpunished. And it certainly isn't that now. It, it, it's an unworkable program. It's an unmanageable program. It's an un, you can't monitor it. You can't enforce it. The whole short-term, personal short-term rental situation is a joke. You know, if somebody can't You know, if somebody can't get a, if they can't get a business one because they're out, they take a personal one, and there's no way you can monitor that. There's just no way you can monitor that. So I would like to see that looked at. I'd like to see the whole thing looked at. I'd like to see, maybe she has an idea, you know, stop this whole, every, every year it's a, you know, first come, first served, or after it's sold, you go into the lottery like everybody else. There's all kinds of ideas and ways to bring this down to a manageable situation. I hopefully, hopefully, we can really get moving on this, get a discussion about this, and go somewhere with this because I think, like they say, it's running out of time. We've talked and talked and talked and talked and talked and talked. And I really, for the sustainability of our community, we have to address this and bring these numbers down, down.
Thank you, Pat. Any other comments? If not, we're moving on. City managers' comments.
Thank you. I'll keep this brief. I know we still have more to do tonight, but I did want to thank our exceptional city staff from Public Works to the Police Department to Shays. We had a fantastic icebreaker weekend, and I can tell you with all hands pulling forward, it really helped out. A lot of kudos to the South Haven Chamber of Commerce that organizes the Icebreaker Festival. And again, I can't understate enough how fantastic the staff are to make this a unique experience and how well it comes off. So my thanks to my staff.
That was quick. Okay, mayor and councilperson's comments. Letitia.
First, I want to say thank you for all of you coming out this evening, and I enjoy the comments and everything. In light of Black History Month, I just wanted to read this quick quote. It says, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" And that's a Martin Luther, Martin Luther King quote about leadership. So I know that as a city councilperson, it is what we are trying to do for others, and I think that is very important. And just in case people don't think that we're listening, we are listening, and we are trying to move things forward. It's just not as easy as it seems, but trust and believe, we are, we are trying to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. George.
No comments.
Joe.
I agree with many comments that have been said and haven't been said tonight, and that's affordable housing. There was an article in the Kalamazoo paper two Sundays ago, and I gave Mary a copy. It is one of the biggest concerns in the state of Michigan, and the governor has recognized it, and they're putting all kinds of money towards trying to make changes. We got to make sure we're going after some of that money. We have to stop thinking that we're the only ones with problems with affordability. We're not. But what we, where we are in a minority is we're not doing enough about it, and that's what concerns me. When George said our population continues to go down for year-round residents, that's a yardstick. Three years ago, the city had its economic plan, and it said by 2025, we'd have a population of 5,500. We have dropped every year since that report came out. So we have to do something about it. And I do believe that short-term rentals are tied in with affordable housing. David said you got to, you got to connect the dots. Bishop Wilkins said you have to connect the dots. They are obvious dots that are connectable. So I do believe, and I'm hopeful, that city council's getting close within 30 days of taking some measures to, to really start affecting change, not only short-term rentals but affordable housing. I would also say in closing that I think the residents can do more, not only to push us, but to push ideas. I've met with Bishop Wilkins and another resident, and this gentleman had all kinds of ideas. And I do think we have a lot of smart people in this town that are capable, and we should be able to get their ideas and together start to make changes. I think it is absolutely amazing that there's more than one city in this state, but Kalamazoo being our neighbor, have actually voted, and I'm not suggesting this for our town, but they were willing to vote in a tax increase specifically to help affordable housing, to help people so they can get into a house. I think I read recently, it is now, I think, age 47 when the average person can buy their first home. I got married at 25. I had my first apartment at 25, my wife and I. By 27, I thought I was right on target, we got our first house. I don't think a young person today can even afford to do it. It is so difficult, if they're lucky enough to get out of college and not be in debt. So I do think as a society, as a town, as individuals, we owe it to our fellow residents, our fellow citizens, and our fellow townspeople to help people afford a home, afford a place to live. And that includes apartments, long-term rentals of apartments. So I am optimistic we're going to do something about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary.
Yes, thank you. I agree with regard to affordable housing, and I know it's been frustrating with what has happened at Overton. I know the environmental issues there are quite unique, and that's not necessarily in a good way. I just remind everybody about the pool and the gym, the factory condos property that had to be taken down, and the remediation of the trichloroethylene, which is on the Overton property. So it's, it's not that it's not buildable, it does have more hurdles. And the environmental information there is, we now have more current for the first couple feet. I know there's a very competitive EPA grant that's been filed. I don't know what it covers. I know it's for Ward 1 and Ward 2. And when we start talking about affordable housing, I would like to address the elephant in the room and have a better understanding of what the real issues are and how we're going to address them because that can't necessarily be on the developer. And I actually have talked with Michigan State Extension, and they've got a lot of information. And I've shared some of it with Kate and asked her to forward it to the city council. I don't know if you've gotten it. If anyone's interested, you can contact me, and I can forward it to you. They have courses. I've taken a couple with regard to seasonal working, work, work housing, and how to address short-term rental issues, how to do zoning amendments, things like that. And it's not necessarily just to the zoning, but also to regulatory codes. So there's a lot of options, and we're actually at an opportunity right now with our recodification to look at ways to address some continuing issues that are, that, that appear to still be in the recodification that could be modified to, to allow more affordable housing duplexes and things like that in our residential areas. So I'm looking forward to having more discussions. I think a working group might be beneficial. I've been looking at this for a while. I know that there are the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority laws that changed last year that open up doors to developers that did not exist before so that, and I know of developers who are, are taking advantage of that, and it would be great to be able to do that in our, in our city.
Thank you.
And one other shout-out. So yes, the, the icebreaker was great, and I want to give a shout-out for Lindsay Delorme. So she organized the 5K run, which I think went off without a hitch. Our own Luke Thompson placed in his age group, and it was a fun time for all, lots of great sponsors, lots of great people, and looking forward to next year's.
Thank you. Wendy.
I just want to say thank you for all the amazing comments tonight. I feel like there are so many good ideas and so much good energy in this room right now. I would love to harness some of that into some positive changes for our town. And what's been said today just reminded me that we have a housing workshop or something to that effect coming up. I feel like it would be really amazing if we could do some interactive portion at the end, let our residents or attendees throw out some ideas and kind of see if anything solidifies or come up with a timeline for bringing some of these things into fruition. I love the idea of having a housing steering committee to do some of that legwork that we might not be able to do. And I just wanted to see if, I think her name was Nancy that spoke earlier.
Nancy, yeah?
No.
Carrie?
No. The, the woman who was upset about her housing.
Oh, the elderly woman.
Uh-huh.
See if we could get in touch with her and just check and see if everything is okay.
I don't have her contact information, but I can find her through the Housing Commission.
Okay. Yeah, that was just a little concerning to me. That's all.
Thank you. Jeff.
My comments, as everyone else, thanks to everyone that came out tonight, thanks to everyone that spoke tonight. Congratulations to the Chamber of Commerce on pulling off another wonderful Icebreaker Festival. And a big thank you, I know several people said it, but thanks to the First Hebrew Congregation for the nice gift that they gave or were accepting. They gave it. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I just want to again congratulate Captain Ron Ridley on his retirement and thank him for his 45 years of service to our community. Mary, thank you for coming to the luncheon. And I want to thank Bob Copping and Shout and Tom Runner and our amazing city staff for coordinating the ribbon cutting for our winter gathering place, and it, it was a great turnout. So there were a ton of people there. And again, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and everyone, the Visitors Bureau and our city staff for the Icebreaker Festival. And I threw the fish, and my husband is estimating it was about 20 feet, and at least it didn't go in the river. So I have a year to practice. I am seeking a motion to go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.2681E to discuss the settlement and/or strategy in the matter of Noonan versus the city of South Haven at all, case number 20070567-no pending in the Van Buren County Circuit Court because discussion in the open session will be detrimental to the city's financial and/or settlement position.
I make a motion that we go into closed session.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reeser.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Hosley.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And we are going into closed session.